I remember my big Yeti cap, so then I don't forget.
I have a Yeti cap, my truck is, I guess, gonna put that in there and this, I forgot.
That makes me better than I, if I go to a meeting or something, I get in there and I'm like...
In the car.
Yeah, where is it? Is it, I left in the car. And usually the car's about four blocks away.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually a pretty short meeting, except for contracts. And I guess it's only a...
Consent.
It shouldn't be too bad. Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Terry Cavanagh? Adam Webb? Mark Cam?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. We have a forum, just barely. Item two is a consent docket, oh, excuse me, item one is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was getting ahead of myself, sorry about that. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September 19th, 2016. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held August 9th, 2016. Item C is receive the minutes of the special joint parks board and community development block grant advisory committee held August 2nd, 2016. Item D is declare a 2011 Ford F-150 crew cab pickup, VIN number 1FTEWICM8BF46817, tag number 955AKP appropriated to the police department as surplus. Item E is approve a contract extension with Silver Shark Construction for on-demand construction services. Item F is approve a contract extension for Rudy Construction for on-demand construction services. Item G, approve a contract extension with Simron Construction for on-demand construction services. Item H, approve a contract extension with O and Associates for on-demand engineering services. I is approve a contract extension with CEC Corporation for on-demand engineering services. Item J is approve a contract extension with Mieschek and Associates for on-demand engineering services. Item K is approve a contract extension with Cabanus Engineering for on-demand engineering services. Item L is approve a contract extension with Community Development Services for professional services of technical assistance for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Item M is approve a contract extension with Horn LLP for professional services of internal auditing services for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. And item N is approve and ratify claimed in expenditures for FY 2016, 2017 in the amount of $4,648,890.50.
A motion to approve.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or... How come we're doing all the contract extensions all at once?
They were all let at the same time approximately a year ago. These are all HUD contracts of various sorts, and it's required under the HUD rules that you just re-approve or renew these contracts every year.
You'd already told me, but I thought everybody else ought to know that, so I appreciate it. Now, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider rezoning application number RZ 945, located in the southeast quarter of Section 30, township 10 North, range 2 West, being north of Southeast 34th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road from A1 Rural Agricultural District to RE Residential Estates. And approve ordinance number 83216, application by Shady Creek Properties, LTD Limited Liability Corporation. This is from Steve Shaw. This is an Ward 1 Community Development.
Mayor and Council, items three and four on your agenda are companion items. This property consists of approximately 4.5 acres. It is located north of 3 and 4th Street, southeast 3 and 4th Street, and west of South Sunny Lane. The property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to rezonate the property to RE Residential Estates to develop less than three lots for residential use. Public water is available to the site. The owner will be extending a public sewer main to serve the three lots. Access will be from southeast 34th Street. Two lots will have curb cuts to southeast 34th Street. One lot will have access to Shady Creek Lane. Thereby, we're reducing the number of curb cuts onto southeast 34th Street. There is no FEMA designated flood plain or floodway located on the property. The conference of plan calls for this location to be rural residential. Therefore, a conference of plan amendment is not required. Due to the growth trend in this area and based on the compliance with the conference of plan, staff recommends the approval of both this application and the companion lot split application. You can see the lot layout on page 344 of your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Might mention that the planning commission looked at these earlier, but we didn't have that information in terms of when the agenda was public?
That is correct, yeah. The planning commission meeting was just last week. We didn't have the information for the voting when this agenda was put together. See, the planning commission voted approval of these items eight to zero.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Questions?
I have my question.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of a lot split located in the southeast quarter of Section 30, township 10 North, range 3 West, being north of southeast 34th and west of Sunny Lane. Application by Steve Shaw.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider rezoning application number RZ 947, located in the southwest quarter of Section 14, township 10 North, range 3 West, being north of southwest 4th Street and east of Interstate 35 from C1 Office District to C3 General Commercial District. And approve ordinance number 83416, application by Greg Rushing. This is an Ward 1.
Mayor and Council, this property consists of approximately a quarter acre. It's located north of southwest 4th Street, just east of Howard Avenue or Interstate 35. The lot is currently, has one residential structure on the lot. A previous, or a second structure was previously demolished after a fire. That was just recently. So that structure has been removed. The applicant is proposing to rezonate the property as C3 General Commercial in order to expand the existing Malibu's business. The existing location will continue to be used. Malibu's does have permission for limited auto sales only. That's limited to five cars, and that will still take place on the existing lot, not this lot under consideration tonight. Public water and sewer are existing to serve the site, and there is no flood plain located on the property. The conference of plan calls for this location to be medium commercial. Therefore, a conference of plan amendment is not required. The subject property is located in a commercialized area and does have similar land uses to the east and to the south. Based on compliance with the conference of plan, staff does recommend approval of this application. I should note that there were several residents who attended the planning commission meeting. They were from the southwest 3rd Street. Their concerns that they voiced were an increased traffic on southwest 3rd Street and parking on the grass right-of-way that they believe is from Malibu's. In regards to these concerns, the applicant has agreed to utilize the existing driveway on southwest 3rd Street for any sort of overnight storage needs. So, in other words, there'll be no new driveway to southwest 3rd Street. And the property will use the existing driveway on southwest 4th Street for their customer's entrance and exit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm sorry. Planning commission also recommend approval of this eight to zero. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
I have one. Addressed it, across the same people, across some concerns, but mainly just the issues I heard more about the parking. Like some of the cars may have a limited license, indicated for selling. So they are parking them on the grass. I've heard everybody noticed that it's, you know, in a residential area, you're not supposed to park or leave them all alone. So, I think they're just concerned that they increase. But what you're telling us is that won't, or can't, can't. Currently, it's okay for him to park the two or three in a in a lot. There's a couple of vehicles that they park on the lot that face East 4th Street.
Right. Well, that's not allowed to occur ever. Now, my understanding was that the concern was parking on the grass on southwest 3rd Street. The applicant did address that, and he's here today and also can speak to you. But the reason why he parks some vehicles on 3rd Street right-of-way is because he's moving the cars within the storage lot. So he might have to back one out, park it there, and then move the cars and move it back in. However, I know the applicant is here tonight if you'd want to have him address that.
Yeah. Hello, please. Yeah, just some questions that I've gotten from some citizens. It has to do with some of the vehicles that you have to sell, they park them on the grass along 4th Street. And Elizabeth just indicated we're not supposed to do that at all. So, they just want to ensure that we need to stop doing that, or, you know, build a park up there or something.
Yeah, I have to go last meeting, Glenn talked to Greg, they were, and we have not parked anything on their seats. They'll just park them along the edge of the concrete. We're just so congested, we're driving, it's so much of this little spot. And with the new plan that we're going up with, it's going to actually have parking on the lot there. You know, our cars, your sales stay there in the center where we're allowed to sell. Everything almost goes either behind the fence or to the, or to the west.
Do you all have your commercial dumpster, is it in plain view, or do you have any kind of fencing around it?
The dumpster's outside, it's outside the fence and third.
Just, well, just as you begin to do some of your renovations, or adding some expansion, or whatever the holiday plans are, might just consider putting a sawdust fence or something else around. Just being a good neighbor, and I've done business with Malibu and been very happy over the years with work that I've done. Nice to see that your businesses grow, that you've been successful. I don't want to, I'm not trying to discourage, but I do just want to bring up some of those things that people have emailed about. And there's some valid concerns or complaints that they have there, so. Might just take this opportunity to address some of that, the commercial dumpster, the parking. With the new plan, we can actually get it behind the gate.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having your business and more.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody against this item? If not, do anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
My second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider adoption of resolution number 86116, adopting the Section 3 Plan as part of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, capital planning and resiliency from HUD.
Mayor and Council, Section 3 promotes and expands the economic opportunity of low to moderate income persons within our community. And the plan depicted or shown, any recipient of federal funds over $200,000 or construction over $100,000 is subject to comply with the Section 3 Plan. And truly, it encourages contractors to hire city more residents before they go out and seek other people for employment. As a city, we are required to meet this, to comply with Section 3, and all, and 30% of all federal funds are subject to meeting this standard as a goal. Staff recommends approval, adopting this resolution. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other? Okay, which call for the vote?
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you, okay. Item seven is consider resolution number 86216, adopting the Community Development Block Grant, the CDVG and the Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery CDVGR, or, excuse me, CDVGR manual for the Community Development Block Grant Programs, Capital Planning and Resiliency.
Mayor and Council, this is an item to truly consolidate the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Antonymate Program that we have, and the Disaster Recovery CDVG Program into one manual. The manual also includes updating all the related items and all federal register notices to date. And it also includes some programmatic updates within the programs we offer. Staff recommends approval of this item and be happy to take any questions.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a question and a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider adopting resolution number 86316, adopting a revised accounting manual for city operations, capital planning and resiliency from HUD.
Mayor and Council, this is consolidating the purchasing policy into our overall accounting manual. Updates of the overall manual were included within this update to include GAAP, HUD, and federal regulations, federal state laws, and implementation of our new accounting system. Staff recommends approval. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote if there's any other discussion?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider resolution number 86416, adopting the CDVG-DR Action Plan Amendment.
Mayor and Council, any movement or change of monies over $1 million require formal adoption of council. Within the Action Plan Amendment, the city requests to move $5,760,000 from resiliency and $2,490,639 from planning into infrastructure, making infrastructure total of $26,250,639. Just to give you a little update, we've completed two infrastructure projects, and we currently have seven projects underway. The second part to the Action Plan Amendment is introducing a policy for a down payment assistance program. Currently, within our action plan, we have this funded at $1 million. On page 399 of your packet is a down payment and closing costs assistance program kind of outline. And I'll briefly touch on what the down payment assistance program will look like as the policies present, presented. It's subject to single-family housing within the tornado-affected area. Properties must be unoccupied for at least 90 days prior to our award going into it. The home prices cannot exceed for existing structures $133,000 and new construction $155,000. It must meet our current enhanced building code requirements and also include a shelter and/or a safe room that meets FEMA standards. Again, properties must be located within the disaster area. This household, or eligible applicants, will have to have a household income within 50 to 80% of the area in median, which is approximately $64,000 for the city. They must meet all the financial guidelines, and this will be a forgivable loan to maximum award of assistance of $40,000, forgivable over five years. We anticipate this program to kick off in early 2017.
Does this include the empty lots over there?
That's what this program truly is designed for, is to...
Fill the lots?
Fill the lots.
I bet the lots just went up.
So this, this is, well, the, it's good news for these people that may be looking to buy a home and need some help. Is the city going to do anything to promote?
Yeah, we'll come out with a full marketing campaign when we release it.
There was a story, I think, in the news media recently about this, and that's generated quite a number of phone calls to Jared's office. I think there'll be quite a bit of activity with this. Hopefully, there will be in terms of spurring some construction in the storm area, perhaps, that they need a little bit of assistance or boost on this.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Second.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 10 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held September 19th, 2016. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016, 2017 in the amount of $948,497.67.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item number 11 is the consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held September 19th, 2016. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016, 2017 in the amount of $207,042.40.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more risk management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number 12 is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Item B is items from the city council or trustees.
A couple of things, but the, the...
Twenty-second?
Twenty-ninth. Big deal. Melissa, Adam, myself, and others of you that would be interested, if I could, would be one of the judges who will close, just let me know. We'll do that, it'll be fun, it always is. There'll be a lot of other stuff happening. And then also, at our ACOG meeting last week, they presented us with this 2040 booklet that I've given you, and just take some time to look through there, just a couple of things to look at. Page four shows the area that ACOG covers, little map, and all the cities and communities that are involved. Page seven, it has some of the trends of population and what the numbers might look like in 2040, which is pretty significant change in population, employment, travel, roadways, and so forth. And then over on, in here, there's about 10 billion to be of projects and monies that will be spent through the course of this plan. So that's monies that are made available to the city of Moore, as well as all the others in ACOG. There's just a lot going on. So take time to look through that and read it. ACOG also has some meetings that are going on. You may have seen it, we covered it, and if you want to come to a meeting, I advise you to come. And a lot of good information happening. So that's just for you to look over.
Thank you, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Item C is items from the city manager or trust manager.
I don't have anything, mayor.
Okay.
We need some music or something, it's really loud.
Yeah. Can you guys sing? Okay. Item 13 is executive session. Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and deem appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation claim by Sam and Trish Allen against the city of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 304, or, excuse me, 307B-4. Item B, discuss and consider the appointment of an interim city manager to serve upon the retirement of city manager Steve Eady as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 307B-1. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
Make a motion, we go to the executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. We are now convene to executive session. Oh, thanks.
See, it's running at this timing.
I don't know if I ever told you when you sign these, is it put by Trish Allen?
I usually do.
Okay, yeah.
Forget.
No, no, I was just, I didn't know if I told...